Good evening, everyone. It is September 19th, 2017. What time is it?
7:10.
7:10 PM, and we're going to call the school committee meeting to order. The first thing on our agenda is the minutes from September 5th, 2017. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any edits, questions, comments?
I just had a question.
Okay.
Says that Mr. Simpson to approve the minutes of the September 5th, 2017. Is that a typo there? It looks like we're approving, the last meeting, we're approving last meeting's minutes.
Yes, it is. Yep.
I think that just needs to be changed to...
So... Yeah, it was September 5th, and we said it was September 5th minutes. It has to be August 21st. Okay, thank you. All right, so with that amendment...
No, that was September 5th.
Well, September 5th was the last meeting. That's... These are the minutes from September 5th.
Are you approving that it's from the 21st, right?
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh, okay, all right. All right, with those changes, all in favor to approve the minutes from September 5th, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any visitors' comments?
Take a nice picture.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's good. We just had our school committee pictures, new school committee pictures taken, so they should be on the website sometime soon. All right, great. Student rep report, the suggestion is that we do student rep report every other week. So probably the first meeting of the month, we do that, and then we skip the second meeting of the month. All right, thank you. We only have one item under new business. I will turn it to you, Cheryl, for that.
Okay, and I will turn it over to Mr. Sullivan from the high school.
Mr. Sullivan?
Where do you guys want me for this?
Yeah, sure. Come and join us here.
So Superintendent Stanton and I would like to recognize a few teachers who were, who made PTS professional teacher status last year at the end of their three years of service to the Grammy Public Schools, finished with a proficient or better rating than their educator evaluation. And so it's certainly accomplishment, and I think it's important that we recognize our teachers for the hard work, because it takes a lot of diligence and hard work to get to that point. Three years is a milestone for all teachers, but especially when they've been in one district. So this month, we have Pam Hoag with us.
Hi, Pam. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Seems formal.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we're rarely formal.
We're rarely formal, but this is such a celebration.
Well, since I have your attention, I just want to kind of explain my position in the school, because I'm not a traditional teacher per se, but I was, I'm a, I have, oh, about to interrupt, okay. So my position as a speech-language pathologist is a little different, so I just wanted to let you know as a governing body for the school, you know, what, how I function in the school. So, let's see, I've been practicing as a speech-language pathologist for 20 years, so I hold a certificate of clinical competence from the American Speech and Language Hearing Association. And my function as a school speech-language pathologist is to support all aspects of communication, from speaking and listening to also reading and writing, interpersonal communication, social pragmatics. I also have skills in providing assistance with augmentative communication for people that are nonverbal and have to use devices, assistive technology for people that cannot write, so speech to text, or helping computers improve comprehension. And I'm very happy to say that the district has appointed me to take initial level, more in Gillingham training this year, so I will be also certified to do reading intervention. And so the district is providing that, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I just saw your school.
Great. That's awesome.
I'm going to let you guys do your business. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
No, thank you for coming.
Get those in some water.
And so we have two others, I think, that will come next meeting, because they're in master's programs, ironically.
Good for them.
So I think that costs them.
That's great. So actually, we mentioned the picture, but probably for a few of us who still have their jerseys, we should explain to folks that we put them on to show our school spirit in our picture, so when you see the picture, you'll know what this, what this is about. Rest of the agenda is on the old business, so we're going to start with the strategic plan and review.
So, yep, we have a meeting on the 25th, I believe.
Yep.
So we will be working to finalize school committee input into the review of the strategic plan with the committee, and I'll be presenting a timeline for that.
Yep.
And so we would most likely be setting revising goals, setting new goals based on my entry plan and the existing strategic plan, so that we can put all of that into a strategic plan, which would drive the district improvement plan, the school improvement plan, and then the evaluation plans and goals for teachers.
Okay.
So it'll all come together, just have to have your meeting first, and then the strategic plan committee meeting, so we're moving forward.
So not to, not to have these meetings too sequential with a lot of gap, are we already in the process of inviting folks to that larger strategic planning session?
Yes.
Okay, great. Dan, you had a question? No?
The 25th meeting is what meeting?
It is a goals, school committee goals, setting, and review of the strategic plan.
Okay. What?
Are you there?
I'm there.
You're there.
Well, I think...
You're not traveling to Riviera yet?
Yeah. We confirmed all this, right?
Yes, we did.
I'm sure it's on my book, in my appointment book already.
Your black book is here.
No, this is my other black book.
Oh, okay.
I meant to bring that in, it's in my car.
So having not read the book, but thank you for your presence, would it help if we review sections or all of this book in preparation for that session? Is this something that we should take as homework?
I would take it as homework.
Okay.
And then maybe you and I could have a conversation about chunking that out, or specific sections that might be helpful for the committee to prepare.
Right. All right, anything else for the strategy, strategic plan, and our review of the plan? Okay, moving on to FY '17 budget. Yes. FY '17 being the budget from the school year that finished, and the fiscal year that ended June 30th.
Correct. Yeah, we are in the process of closing out. So in the Google Drive, and also attached here, I've given you a copy of the budget, which is the local and the grants in their entirety, but I also did a summary page to kind of go over the end of FY '17 and the beginning of FY '18. So if you were to look at the end of the local budget, of the total budget of $8.6 million, there is currently a balance of $36,128.
Where are we looking?
Okay, so if you're, if you're looking at the budget, and because it's paged back-to-back, it would be one, the back, two, the back, three, so it's actually your third page, total local budget.
Total local budget. Okay, eight, six, eighty?
Almost towards the bottom, yep.
Okay.
And what I did was I copied and pasted those same numbers and posted here on the summary.
Okay.
So out of that, out of the total budget, we have the original expended amount that happened during FY '17, the balance that was left, then of course, we have the summer pays that carry over that were monies that were spread out over the summer, but our FY ' '17 funds. So after we did the last payroll at the very end of August, now putting that into this final budget, the current balance that we have in the budget is $36,128, which is 99.58% of the budget expended. Now we have to work on the closeout process. Right now, we are working on food service, because food service, as you know, we have the balance that needs to be contributed from Chartwell's operations, which was $8,986.51. I also had a conversation with the auditor over the change in inventories, because inventory change also contributes to expenses, so that's an additional $1,593.86, which I also noted in the summary here. And having now received the actual townside expenditure detail from the auditor, I'm trying to compare it with the school budget. I did ask the town accountant if he could provide it in Excel, because it would be a lot easier for me to match it up and see where we're different, but there's probably another few thousand dollars worth of expenses between the two that need to be reconciled. So we're probably looking something in the neighborhood of $13,000, $14,000 to be reconciled and charged against the local budget, so you can expect that that $36,000 balance will come down once we finish the food service reconciliation. And I also asked the town accountant if we could have the expenditures on the town side in Excel, so we can do a comparison against the school side expenditures. In the reconciliations that we've done so far of the DESI function codes, we pretty much match up, only maintenance is off a little bit, so it's not going to be a huge amount, but it would be much easier to go through the detail if we can match in Excel and not go through 10 or 15 pages of paper and checkmarks. And in having a conversation with the town accountant, all transfers that need to be done after the fact, once we reconcile, should be done no later than September 27th. So our goal is to get those Excel docs from him and try to finalize that this week or early next week, so we can get FY '17 closed out on the local side, on both the town and school side.
Mike, where are you seeing the lunch numbers?
The lunch numbers aren't actually in here, because they're part of the food service revolving account. What I was doing is I was taking the figure that we were brought to school committee from Chartwell's in June, when they had their, or actually, it was July, after June finished up, plus the number that I got from Tom Scanlon, the auditor, as to what the change in inventories were, which was basically last year's inventory versus this year, and the net difference to it.
So pre-inventory, what was that number?
Well, pre, I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into it. So pre, we have the results of operations, which was that almost $9,000 figure.
It was $8,000 something, wasn't it?
Yep.
Okay.
And then Tom was at about $13,000 after that, because there's some, there were some additional things, like in just looking through, and it's like 10 pages of results on the town side and similar on our side, and matching them up.
Or lunch-related?
Well, that's what we have to go through and find out, but there were a couple of charges for pest control that we said we weren't going to put in the, in the budget that wound up being in food service, so we can reclass them back into the local budget. So things like that are probably going to put it a little bit off, and we'll go through and see what the differences are between the two.
Okay.
But I mean, we're not, we're not talking a huge amount of money, we're talking several thousand dollars on, you know, $300-plus thousand dollars worth of food service expenditures.
Right, but that still brings us back to the conversation that we keep on having, which is we have that $10,000 buffer, and are we within or outside that?
We might end up being slightly outside that, but in terms of the overall budget, we still have $36,000 unexpended in the budget, so if that line goes over...
Yeah.
The budget won't go over.
Right, but still, again, from a lunch perspective, we still have some work to do, that's what, that's what it means.
And that's, and that's why I kind of want to go through the process of line by line, looking at what the town recorded and what we recorded, because we assume that what Chartwell's records is the total expenditure minus any change in inventory, but if there's other things in there that's contributing to this, this couple thousand dollar discrepancy, what is it? Well, you know, I'll find out what it is, and we can discuss it.
Right. Because honestly, one thing that I find frustrating is that we do not have a way to say, we're done here, and here are some lines that should match, and if they do not match, we know what it is, that we have to sift through tons of different things, and I know it's accounting, I know that there are some challenges, but I thought with that report that we got from Chartwell's, the main gap that we were going to look at was going to be the inventory. And on the inventory side, I'm glad that we came to the same conclusion, that it doesn't make any sense to take the entire inventory, it should be the difference in inventory levels, okay? And that keeps us very close to that $10,000 level, but still, it's something that we need to talk about. Now I'm hearing that there might be some other things hidden somewhere between the lines, but it should be already in the lunch program budget, right? Whether on the Chartwell's side or our side.
One would assume, yep.
Yeah.
But that's why I would go through the process and see what wouldn't be there, and why would there be, you know, differences? I mean, they all have to be explainable.
Okay.
Like I said, the pest control ones are easy, because our intention was, and through the course of the year, we didn't charge pest control to food service, but I think what happened is during the early part of the year, we started that process, we ended that process, but to go back and say, oh, yep, we need to reclass those, and that's, that's, you know, easy enough to do, we can reclass it into the local maintenance budget, because that's where we charged it for most of the year, but, you know, some of those things may just need to be cleaned up.
Okay, all right. So we're going to have an update on this next time?
Yep.
Okay. All right, any questions on FY '17?
Well, then also, I just had a grants update for FY '17 as well below. I kind of did a summary of all the grant results, and for the most part, all the grants have been expended down to zero, if you look at the bottom-line balance on your right-hand column, even after some were expenses, because again, we did have expenses from salaries that got charged over the summer. We have two grants that we have a couple of encumbrances on, $509 on the 243 grant, and $100 on the 298 grant, and we're chasing down the invoices, so we can get those paid out. Everything else is paid off, with the exception of Title I, which has $503 left, once we settle up the fringe benefits that we have to pay back to DESI for the salaries in that line.
Which one?
The Title I.
Okay.
Title I, it's going to, it shows 86.68, but there's $7,500 and change worth of, actually more than that, of fringe benefits that are part of the grant that they require us to put in, so that we are paying MTRS for the staff in there. So, and that needs to be paid out as we finalize the grant. So of that 86.63, the only actual amount available, once we pay that line out, which you can see in the, in the detail here, in the, in the actual grant detail, is $503.
And that, do we keep that, or does it go back?
It will roll over into, because Title I and Title II are now two-year grants by DESI, they just roll over. And Title II is the one that has a sizable balance, $53.93 is the balance, and again, that will roll as year two of that grant, which we can use on, for professional development or other things if we deem it necessary, but the reason why we have that much left over is we, we had money left in the FY '16 Title II grant, so as we had all the professional development expenses this year, we made sure we charged out FY '16 first, because that was year two of that grant, so we fully expended that, and that left us a small balance in Title II that we can carry into next year.
Okay.
But other than that, those, other than those differences, the grants are fully expended for FY '17.
And this would be independent of the $36,000 plus that we talked about?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, local is its own number, and then grants is separate.
Yep.
And then for FY '18, giving you a budget update, we've been going through the process all through the summer, and even up until today, hiring forms coming in, change of staff, people who have left, replacements, so we've been going through that process, and we're finalizing it, and once we, it's, while it's slowing down, once we reach the final point where we can have a budget that will input into budget sense and have you revote as a line item budget, we'll bring that to school committee. The result of the changes to the budget right now puts the budget in a negative position, which I have also...
Which budget are we talking about?
FY '18.
'18.
Yep, so it's in your packet, and it's also, I gave you that front page that you're, sorry it's so small, but that's how it printed out, if you look at it in the Google Drive, it's a lot easier to see.
Or magnifying lens.
But, exactly. The current negative position is $184,372, which is a significant amount of money. There's a, there's several factors that contribute to that. There was a new tuition for Smith-Vogue for an incoming student that the district has to pay for, there's a new special education student who has entered the district that was an unbudgeted, unexpected expense, and there is a need for additional second-grade teacher, because enrollments in grade two were so high. So those factors, and as well, I gave you a little summary of the way the, the grants have come in for FY '18 versus '16, there's been reductions in the grant lines of $66,139 as compared to last year, so that's another $66,000 that the local budget has to absorb, that contributes to that amount. However, the superintendent, at this point, because the deal with the finance company and the town, the finance company, the finance committee, they might be, and the town was, if you have unexpected, unanticipated expenses, to go and make the request to have those voted on town meeting floor, the total for those three events that I just described, total...
Not being voted on.
Right. Asking for the transfer first.
Well, transfer to the degree, to the, to the authority that they have, and then above that, you know, would be a vote. So the total...
That's an important clarification.
Well made, thank you. So the total is $179,408.48. So obviously, with these three unanticipated costs, when you compare that against where the budget is right now in terms of its overage, you're, we're only talking about $5,000, based on those additional expenses that have occurred, and that's not even counting what was absorbed from the change in grants. So that's the current status of the budget, so obviously, it would be very important that, you know, these unanticipated expenses that was requested that the school make up the town when they occur are funded.
Any status on that?
The signed forms were sent to Chris last, this week, this week. So we spent last week getting the right accounting numbers onto the forms, I emailed them, so he was aware of them last week, but we sent the signed forms down this week, so we'll follow up on the procedure.
And he forwards them to the finance committee?
I believe so, yes. Yep.
Okay.
Because, you know, I'd like to know what is considered a reasonable amount of time for us to get some communication.
Well, and I also think that if we go back to the budget timeline that you approved, in early October, that's when we need to have a sit-down with the finance committee, so that they can understand some of the changing budget pressures, reductions in grants that have come in, changes in enrollment, changes in school choice, so that they have a very clear picture of why the budget stands where it stands.
But we're not going to be waiting until...
No.
...early October to get...
Nope.
Right, I mean, I don't think it's a reasonable...
Two separate things, but...
Okay. The $66,000 or so difference in grants, what is driving that?
I think a lot of it is just, you know, the funding mechanism, what the federal government sends to the state, and then what they are able to offer based on what they have for their portion of the federal contribution.
Did the parameters of those programs, whatever they might be, change?
No, the funding changed.
Right, so nothing changed, but the funding changed. So for the same thing, we said it was $66,000 more, or it should get $66,000 more, now we're saying it should get less, $66...
They just cut it because they can.
I thought I heard a story on NPR about this recently, a few weeks back.
They just cut, they just cut your grants when, they just cut them, they don't really give you a reason.
Well, I don't think they have to give you a reason, because a grant is free money, according to the, you know, like, considered free money. Even though it's, we, I get it.
No, I know. I know.
I didn't say anything. Coming into the town, they consider it...
A gift, yeah.
A gift. Mm-hmm.
Well, it is a designated...
Right, but it doesn't matter, they, the governor puts his budget out, and they cut whatever they need to. Because education doesn't matter.
So are we going to follow up to see when we can expect to hear back from the finance committee? I mean, either way, it's going to have to happen one way or the other.
Right.
You know, I don't think that we can emphasize enough that we did not get the opportunity to build this year, even though we tried to explain, we had to turn down some of the school choice applicants, because we could not hire another, another teacher, for instance, for kindergarten, things that we could have built on, as we're, we are preparing to transition to the new school building, those aren't available. So many times, we're putting ourselves in this position, but the $66,000, nothing we can do about that, so it's completely unexpected. A student who moves to another vocational school, and we have to support that, nothing we can do about that. And these were all unexpected events, so to the extent I agree with it, to the extent that it is within those parameters, hopefully, we can have that conversation with them soon enough.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Any questions on, do you have anything else, by the way?
I don't.
Okay. When are we supposed to approve the updated budget?
Well, I mean, it really comes down to a point where we've slowed down enough of the hiring that the numbers aren't going to change much more, we don't want to have you vote a budget and then revote a budget, and since it's slowed down, I would say probably by the next meeting that we have, we're going to be settled down enough that we can rework the numbers and say, here's our...
But there's no statute that says by this date, you will have to...
No, because at this point, where, once the town has approved the bottom-line number, that number can't change, you know, other than any, any recommendations from the finance committee or, or vote, so...
So we're amending based on the changes that will happen?
Right, so changes will occur within the budget, but the bottom-line budget won't change.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone?
Uh-uh.
No. All right. School committee goals, we talked about those. This is the 25th part of our meeting is for that. Anything else that you wanted to add? Okay, the subpay proposal.
So, come in...
And I think it's, it's only here, because it wasn't new, then we didn't get the chance to talk about it, but now it's part of the old.
Right. So there's been a request in order to garner as many substitutes as possible from a very small pool of substitutes in the area, to recognize substitutes who have and hold an educator's license, and that would bring us into alignment with some of the surrounding communities in terms of recognizing with pay, people who have that and hold that license as substitutes. So the recommendation is, currently, we pay two-year degree, a person with a two-year degree $70 to substitute, a person with a bachelor's degree $75, and so we are recommending adding a third for a person who holds an educator license and/or a master's degree, and that pay would be $80, and there's a cost analysis of that, based on how many people we have that were licensed that served as substitutes last year, at a $5 increase, the total would be about $1,400.
$1,400.
And so I think it's a way to bring in people who are licensed to see the strong work that's happening in our district, and oftentimes, we can see potential in some of our substitutes to become some of our own teachers and part of our teaching staff, so we'd like to have licensed people be a part of our substitute pool.
Any questions, any thoughts?
Where would that $1,400 come from?
Last year, of course, every year is different, but last year, if we look at the total expenditures in the sublines, they ran under by $756, so you could say half of that, all things being equal, would be funded by the subline as it exists. And, you know, every year is, every year is different, but $700 is not a big make-or-break deal when you've got an $8 million budget. I mean, right now, we're looking at, after having, running, running operations through the course of this year, we're still in the high teens, probably in terms of unexpended, so, I mean, potentially, all things being equal, next year, you'd have funds available to pay for the additional $700 for the other half of that increase.
So I see the benefit of paying somebody who has more credentialing. I guess I'm just wondering if you see that benefit in a substitute setting? You know, if a teacher is there for a day, you know, do you, do you get to maximize that extra credentialing?
Right. I think you do. Someone who holds a license, has been through a licensure program, has participated usually in a teacher prep program, has been mentored, most likely, or going through mentoring, many of them are in master's programs, so I do think you see the benefit of someone who is either a retired teacher potentially, a licensed teacher, but also someone who may be, you know, seeing education as their career choice and, and career path.
So is that what you are predominantly seeing in that pool of folks, is retired teachers?
We have a combination.
Or...
We have a combination, yep.
Teacher, people who are working towards becoming full-time teachers, or maybe who haven't had the opportunity to get a full-time position somewhere, and is trying to get the foot in the door?
Exactly.
I, I was thinking along the same lines, that, I mean, no, um, nothing negative intended, but, you know, when we hear about substitute teachers, and probably was our experience as well, it's just one person who appears in your classroom for one day, and you try to get all the fun out of it. If not, you just, you know, put your head down and read something, but the interaction is minimal.
You got a couple worksheets you're doing, and, you know.
Yeah. So with that minimal interaction, if that's the case, and really not, nothing new being added, even though, you know, the per-hour increment is not huge, it adds up to fourteen hundred dollars, which I don't know whether will have a major return for us. The other thing that you mentioned was potentially the, the, these folks could be part of our pool in the future if we hire, but if some of these folks are also possibly retired teachers, we're not gonna have them as part of our future pool.
Right.
I don't know what, what the benefit is gonna be, really. Unless you say, there's no way for us to get anybody else at the levels, then we would definitely like to, I would definitely like to see the comparison, because last time, when we looked at the numbers, we were not really that far off compared to other districts.
Right.
So now, and this wasn't really brought up either, that there was a professional level or certification level differential. Uh, is it possible to look at those numbers before we make a decision?
Or, uh, my question is, when you're looking at a substitute, is that the criteria that you're, that you're wanting to use? Then you want somebody who has this master's or teacher certification?
Mm-hmm. We're looking for people who are committed to education, to be in front of kids, so when they get a substitute, um, plan, they know how to implement, they understand the language of that plan, and they can move forward with the implementation of a good plan. They can actually do the instruction, um, they understand what's going on in the classroom. And I think it sets a better expectation for teachers to leave plans if they know that a substitute, that we're going after people who are licensed and educators, looking to be educators. And so, we're just trying to raise the, the level of competence and rigor, really, and across the board.
Do you have a difference, and a weight in what you're looking for, if you know somebody's gonna be out potentially one or two days, versus somebody you know's gonna be out for two to three or four weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yep, yep. So we try to make a good fit between a long-term sub, somebody that maybe has a math certificate to match someone who's in math, so that students aren't losing learning time, absolutely.
So this would be for long-term subs?
It would, it could be, yes.
Yeah, I, I don't think I need to see more data. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to defer to, to your expertise, and if, and if you feel, I mean, it makes sense to me, you wanna raise the bar, then you gotta raise the bar.
Well, and the other problem is, if they have a choice between going to another district that pays that five dollars more, and else they're gonna choose the other district, and they don't have subs.
Also, if you raise this, you, you're gonna raise a bigger pool. I can tell you right now that there are some people out of West Street tomorrow that nobody has signed up to sub for them. So then it will be a shuffle. But if you build, because of this increase, you build a sub base or a bigger pool, then we're not gonna have these gaps where some kids are missing out. Plus, one particular sub might be fabulous for first grade and second grade, and those teachers will write briefer plans to leave, because they know if they leave this paper, they don't have to give details like name first, go over the directions with the class. They've got somebody coming in that they don't have to be as specific and directed for, because they're familiar with education. Speaking as, having covered classes, because there's also that piece where parents get paid their day pay, plus extra to cover these classes, sometimes the teachers would prefer us, whereas if you had another pool, and it's a repeater, a person who has been, become familiar to them, they're gonna request, they're gonna know what kind of plans. They know that they don't have to say, you really need to watch Bobby, because he's gonna give you a run for his money. These people are coming in, having an education, educated background, been in schools, it makes life easier for the kids and us.
Yeah. And I- I appreciate that, I think we, we had part of the conversation, and those are good ways of looking at it. What really, I can't, uh, figure out in my, in my head is, among many things, one is some, how many people really with a high-level certification are waiting to be substitutes and not really employed somewhere? Uh, two, what is, what is so likely, what is the likelihood of us getting the same people as substitutes, since we are, you know, they hit us whenever we need them? What is the likelihood of that happening? And probably more importantly, if we're saying that these, this new pool that we're gonna create is the way to go, then I'm wondering why we even have the other two pools, if they're adding no value whatsoever in our minds? So I'm kinda, I, I am, um, a little puzzled in my, in my head, since we just had this conversation last year or the year before.
Two years ago.
Yeah? And, and we updated, and we had all these great conversations, I'm just trying to understand what the added value's gonna be. And at the end of the day, if we can't really justify it, then I'm wondering, is it really something that we have to spend fourteen hundred dollars for?
I don't, um, let me back up. There are many subs that we use that fall into the associate's degree that are fabulous, and they've been with us for a long time, and I don't wanna discredit, you know, their service to Granby in any way. And, one of the things that we do recognize is, we don't have enough substitutes. So if we've exhausted all of our non-licensed or non-degreed folks, how can we create more, more of a pool? And one of them is to look at licensed folks, because we don't have that category, we just have bachelors, but to look at licensed educators and say, can we attract those people? Because it doesn't appear that, if you look at the other towns, you know, we don't, we don't pay more for a licensed educator where the other towns are. So I think that's a question that I can't answer, are we going to, you know, increase our pool significantly? I don't know. That's our hope.
Well, it makes sense. I mean, if, if a substitute knows the, the rate, the daily rate, and they know all the districts around, and they know which districts they want to, are more attracted to, and which districts they're less attracted to.
Right. And I think Aesop has, um, it has a tremendous amount of benefit, but it also puts the pool, it spreads the pool across all of the towns in the area that are using Aesop. So, if I'm a substitute and I live in Granby, and I'm in Aesop, I can also see all of the other town that are using Aesop. So, I can pick and choose to sub in multiple districts as opposed to just one. And then I become a, a user of the calendar, and I can just plug myself in, so it, it is hard to be competitive. I mean, we have to be competitive in that environment.
Plus, you've got those newly certified teachers out there, who have college bills to pay, and haven't had, you know, there's, they haven't gotten a job yet, but they're certified and experienced, and a lot of them have master's degrees.
You know, and I, I'm wondering too, if, you know, I get fourteen hundred dollars is fourteen hundred dollars, but asking Cheryl to gather more data, I just wonder if that's the best use of her time?
Well, I'm assuming it's available somewhere, or I just-
I guess I, I wanna clarify-
But how do we even know that there, we're not paying something similar to other districts if we did not have that information? I assume that it was already available, since that's the premise of this request, right?
Well, shi, I would, Cheryl knows that information.
So, that's, that's what I'm asking. My assumption is that she knows it, that means it's somewhere, or is it just anecdotal that we heard?
Can you clarify what kind of information you're looking for?
You, you said that our pricing is such that we're at a disadvantage?
Yes.
And last time I looked, that there wasn't a huge gap, in fact, that was the reason why we increased. Either those folks also increased after us.
Okay, yep. We're at a disadvantage because we don't offer the licensed-
Or the teacher tier. She's just asking to add another level. She's not asking to increase current rates for the bachelors or the associates. She's asking to add a third tier.
And the third tier would put us over the surrounding towns by five dollars. So, most of the towns are paying seventy-five dollars a day for licensed, we would be paying eighty.
Why would we do that?
So that we can get a bigger pool, and we can be the choice of, the first choice of substitutes. So we can fill all of our absent substitute. I mean, I can do an analysis and bring you how many times we don't have a sub to cover, and therefore we're paying paraprofessionals or teachers on a prep, and how much more expensive that is. If you wanna play just numbers games, we need more subs in the pool, so that we're not having open classrooms, and so that, you know, the principals aren't spending their time in the morning rearranging paraprofessionals and subs and teachers to cover classes, because we don't have a substitute in the classroom. We don't have a substitute available. No one called in to take the position.
I'm sorry, the comment that you have, tomorrow, just tomorrow, that's not covered, just kinda bothers me.
But it, it, it seems that pricing is not the reason why we have those openings tomorrow, right? Or are we saying that when the price is the same, people choose to go somewhere else and not to come to Granby? I mean, the pool is the pool, the pool is the availability of any subs out there who are nearby. If the seventy-five dollar is seventy-five dollar here in Belcher Town, if we're not getting, Belcher Town is not getting somebody tomorrow either, I would assume. Or, if you say, you know what, based on what we know, Belcher Town gets somebody because they are Belcher Town, and we, for whatever reason, are not the top choice, that's something else, then, you know, maybe that's a factor that we need to consider.
So are you saying that we're, um, we're paying bachelor's level the same amount that other districts are paying a master's level?
Licensed, yes, whether it's a master's or not.
And the problem, if we try to adjust that, then the people that are in that pool are not gonna come here, because they're gonna be basically taking a pay for it.
Well, no, because they, so our bachelor's is the same as licensed, so-
Right, so what I'm saying is, if you try to make a, a spot in the middle saying, this is for bachelors at sixty-five dollars an hour, and then our, our licenses are gonna be the seventy-five dollar-
We had a worse problem then.
Right.
We had to address, two years ago, we had, we had nobody, it was a huge problem, so we had to increase the rate. And I, you know, you also have to think about, where are these people driving in from? If I have, if I'm licensed and I have a master's degree, and it's the same, if I'm gonna get the same amount of money to go sub down the street, or in Granby, or maybe I'm gonna take the extra five bucks for my gas and go sub in Granby, because it's a quieter school system. It's just an extra couple bucks to sweeten the pot, and say, you've got a license, you probably deserve five bucks, more than anybody else.
You're trying to entice, you're trying to entice subs away from other districts.
Absolutely.
So that we have-
Yeah.
We have the number-one choice. We are, we become the number-one choice.
Yes, and we also therefore then get the best subs.
Right. And you're more likely to build up a long, long-term subpool, you'll build up, and not only that, but, you know how it is, you pay people a little bit more because they have a little bit more experience, or whatever, you breed loyalty that way.
So this is a different philosophy. This is, you know, like Cheryl said, we can play the numbers game, right? Or we can think a little bit differently here, and what she's-
This is not a numbers game at all. This is basically telling me that Granby is not at a, is not, um, the same, at the same level, or considered the same level, from the substitute's perspective. So for seventy-five dollars, even though we're paying the same thing, they're not, they don't wanna come here, they wanna go somewhere else.
Well, no, 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 that's, that's not what she's saying. What she's saying is that-
That's what it is.
And, and this is what we've known for two years now, that there, there has been, and continues to be, a shortage of substitutes, am I correct?
Yes.
So, by raising the rate, we hopefully will become the number-one place to substitute, because we're gonna be offering five dollars more.
By virtue of price, not by, by other factor, by virtue of pricing point. If that's the conversation we're having, that's different than, it's not a numbers game, it's basically us saying that we still are not the top choice for someone who sees the same amount of money for the hour.
Okay.
And that's, that's, that's what I'm asking.
It sounds like that might hurt your feelings, love it.
But, but, again, this is, what we are trying to play is a numbers game, what I'm saying is not a numbers game, I actually want people to come to Granby, because, you know, it's the same thing, Belcher Town, South Hadley, Granby. After having all the conversations that we had, in front of this camera or elsewhere, I'm not gonna take a back step and say that now we're worse than the others, and the only way to entice them is to give them over more.
That's not, that's not true. But we're enticing teachers who have more training, we're enticing teachers who have a master's degree or a teaching certificate. Those are the ones that we're enticing, we're saying, we want teachers who are more qualified, we want the teachers who are more committed to teaching.
Well, go one step past that. If they haven't been in Granby before, and they'll come for the higher price, chances are, they're gonna find out what a wonderful school system.
That's what I meant.
I can't tell you that Cheryl Stanton was walking the halls in Granby last year, and a little boy came out of the bathroom and said, Mrs. LaMorder, look what I found here. He found one of the custodians' walkie-talkies. Her words to me were, in the school system I was at, he would've been playing on that, and fooling with it, this kid didn't do that. He found a responsible adult, and gave it to me, and of course, then I did something with it, it was not on me. And so-
They know who you are, apparently.
Everybody knows who I am. But once these people come here and see what an amazing environment we have, and the staff that is here, and how people care for the kids, exactly what you're saying, they will come back.
We're, we're sending the message.
And I'm sorry, if it costs five dollars more to get them here.
We're sending the message that we appreciate the time and energy that you've put in to training yourself.
All right, so I think we had enough conversation on this, we don't have to be on the same page. Is there a motion to approve the proposal to increase, or to create a third tier for certified and what else?
Licensed.
And licensed, uh, substitute teachers?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye abstain?
Butter bang.
No, it's not butter bang, it's just that I still cannot justify it in my head, but, you know, I'm not gonna go against the committee, obviously.
We'll win you over.
What?
We'll win you over.
We'll prove it, we'll prove it to you.
Okay. So, with that lively conversation, we have, do we have any upcoming business that you wanted to mention?
Uh, there's a school building committee meeting on Thursday evening, correct?
No idea. I did not receive anything, it was actually last Thursday.
I believe I-
No, I mean, it's what, it was supposed to be last Thursday, and it did not happen, so I don't know that there is another one this week.
I have it as the twenty-first, so, um, I will confirm, and let you know.
Okay. All right. So, moving on to our standing reports. First, the superintendent's report, do you have one today?
I do.
Okay.
Except I just, let me do that, I closed out of my, closed out of it, okay.
I like the pictures on your superintendent's report.
Still see the flock of seagulls?
I know, I still, I know, I had a new flock picture, yes. I wa, I, while, while this is loading, thank you to the PTO for flocking, um, that is an amazing fundraiser, it has just generated a ton of fun in the schools and throughout the community, and, correct me if I'm wrong, are they doing a paint-your-driveway?
Yep.
So, I would certainly, I would have to check with DPW, but, um, if someone from the PTO could reach out, maybe we could paint the-
So am I posting that again?
Granby, yeah.
My gosh.
Thank you. It's my connection.
Okay.
So, superintendent update. So, thank you to all who came to all of our open houses in each of the buildings, the schools came alive with students and their families, community organizations sharing how they support children, and staff who make sure the school is a special place to learn and grow. We have much to celebrate in Granby, the building project- The building project is on schedule and dare I say, on budget. Uh, we are asking that any interested parents or community members reach out to Principal Latoy if they would like to participate on a committee which will work on making a recommendation for naming the school, um, as well as planning transition activities as we move closer to September two thousand and eighteen. So please reach out to Mr. Latoy. Uh, you can call either East Meadow or West Street School Office and let him know that you're interested. And uh students are participating in many opening of the school activities and learning opportunities that focus on building strong relationships which will sustain them and their learning throughout the school year. So be patient if our children aren't jumping right into academics. A lot of what is important in Granby are building very strong relationships, um, not only with their teachers, but with their peer groups, um, and those are the things that will sustain their learning um as they move through the year. Um, and finally, we are looking forward to a wonderful school year.
Absolutely. I I don't know the numbers, but it looked much more uh crowded or better attended, the open house at the high school.
Very much so.
Yeah, it was, there was an overflow.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think next year, we're gonna have to put the cafeteria tables away and put the um regular chairs out for folks. So I I noticed we had some people up in the back. Um, they're just, we ran out of seats, which um is wonderful. Uh, we know that by seventh grade, there sometimes is a separation, um, but it was really nice to see all of the parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles and um everybody in the building uh to support their students, so.
And it was a tough evening weather-wise. It was very muggy, incredibly humid out there.
Yeah.
And uh, but it was, it was well-attended, it was good. And I, you know, maybe it wasn't me, but I I felt a positive vibe uh from folks that I spoke with, so it was good. Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, da-da-da-da, collaborative, is your meeting?
That's next, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay, thank you. Um, the the committee, West Street Building Committee did not meet last week, so we don't have any update on that one.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Class classrooms for grades, what's what's being built over there? I was at a couple events over the weekend and there was some, some, some questions on, especially with the need for the third, second grade teacher, if that would've progressed and then how how is the the school committee gonna try to take advantage of the new school and try to bring more choice in? Are we set up for like three classrooms for each grade? Like, I could probably go on our website and look through the material, I was just, I was just kinda curious as to what what was being built, built over there for classrooms?
The bottom line is, we can have three classrooms per grade. The way it was built, I think the plan shows two for second grade, but there was an overflow room that was to be dedicated if there was need and especially for second grade. So that's what's gonna be used if there is, well, for the third classroom. So it was planned that way. Um, this question came up uh several times and even during the uh the committee meetings. I think we inadvertently may have driven some of that confusion, but it was really planned to to make sure that when three classrooms start, they can just go up in three classrooms. Obviously, you can't control the number of students, but we're not really expecting a huge increase in numbers. We expect it to stabilize at a certain level and we do have room to be able to have a healthy number uh of students in each one of those classrooms. That's the way it was planned. So the one thing that I don't know, which, you know, uh follows on your question, because we're gonna be using that that additional space as the second, uh, the third, second grade classroom, I don't know what that means in terms of whatever that room was supposed to be.
Right, so there's some discussion going on with Mr. Latoy right now and Carol Hepworth around um special ed programming and special ed classrooms because if you remember, we created um the support classroom uh for uh West Street students. Um, and so right now, we're talking about this space long-term and what some of the recommendations will be for classroom usage. But I think um, you know, that is always a changing and flowing um dynamic as enrollment changes, as programming changes. Um, you know, we're not the same as we were, you know, twenty years ago when Mrs. Brown was in room two for her entire career. Um, we do have to be more nimble um as student needs change, so while while we anticipate being able to have three classrooms, you know, there will be years where there's only two classrooms in a grade levels. And so that, you know, will all play into how the building is used and staffed and programmed.
But but we do have the ability to have three classrooms on multiple grades at the same time.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's gonna be the question that's being driven at me.
Yep, yep.
I think your second question is important too. How are we going to and what are we going to start promoting the new school? Is that what you were asking?
Well, that was part of it because the way I see it, there's only a finite amount of time. It's not like just one shot, but I'm assuming it's only like three to five years where we can really sell that new school as a new school, right?
Yeah, I would, I would assume that, sorry, I would assume that those additional kindergarten students, the second grade, well, second grade was moving, especially with school choice students, probably were reflective of the fact that we have a upcoming new building and they want it to be there when it started, right?
Mm-hmm.
With first grade. Sorry.
And I think, you know, to your point about when are we, you know, going to be more marketable, um, when we're in the building in February, um, that's when we will also be introducing school choice openings and being able to tour people. Um, I think we would have a better feel, you know, at kindergarten this year. We just did not have enough commitment um to open that third classroom. Um, and I recognize that, you know, the the class size is a little bit um larger um than we'd like, but um enrollment in Granby um was uh forty-one students. Um, and so it's it's maintaining that. Um, we've had several, we've had a couple of students go to Children's First um in their new kindergarten program. Those students will most likely be coming back to us as first graders, so there's some changing dynamics that, you know, um, we're working with. And we're hopeful that some of our Children's First friends um from of our surrounding communities who've made really good relationships with our Granby friends um will come back and and stay with their friends here in Granby. Um, as they've gotten used to their routines and um Children's First, getting in the car and coming to school, they'll just go an extra mile and and stay with their friends. So um there's a little bit of dynamics that we're working with and partnerships we're creating, um, you know, with the community, so.
Great.
That's cool. Um, policy subcommittee.
Yeah. Policy subcommittee, we had our first meeting yesterday. Um, we are working through the Bs.
Bees, yes.
There's a lot. There's a lot. Um, we, so when we've scheduled our next meeting, um, we should have something, I think, for school committee before the end of October, right? To probably to approve?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think.
And there are some changes that we need to still run by the school committee-
Yeah, I'd have a first meeting.
As we approve those. In pre- not B, but D has some changes, so.
Yep.
Um, because the policy subcommittee meetings are not in front of the camera, a couple of notes, one is Jen is chairing that subcommittee. Uh, number two, um, thank you for preparing the B section, which is actually not the easiest section to read, to compare what the MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' version is with all the legal updates versus what we have and color coding all the gaps, whether we have it or not, whether something doesn't make sense, whether, you know, we have it and they don't have it. It it made it a lot easier to us to follow, so thank you for putting the work in that.
My pleasure.
Who's the policy subcommittee?
You.
Jen and I.
Oh, and you, you're not on it?
I'm on it.
Oh, the three of you.
I'm a consultant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One policy that we changed, by the way, was one that said the uh chair and the superintendent will be on every subcommittee.
No.
Strike that.
It wasn't the Bs, yes. All right, so anything else? Okay. So that will conclude the open session or meeting.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
How did the um, the town meeting go with Senator Lesser and?
Oh, town hall, yeah. Well, I, so I'll be honest, it wasn't what I thought it was gonna be, what I expected. I thought it was gonna be a meeting. It was meet and greet separately before the town hall, which was open to the public. So it was nice that they made a point of having the school committees from Belcher Town and Granby and a few more elected officials, I think it was a select board from Belcher Town, and then Mark joined us uh later on representing the uh Granby uh select board. But it wasn't really, it was standing and talking about things. The nice thing was that Cheryl took the opportunity to get into business-
Too good.
And uh and talking about everything that we wanted to talk about anyway.
Why wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great.
It's about s- four minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She was ready for elevator speech and-
I always had my elevator speech. It was a little long, the glaze started, but then I backed off, I knew.
Yeah. So that was it, and the um, the town hall was, you know, was much less involved around education, more around some policy issues that they're debating in Boston. The biggest thing probably is things, factors, uh, well, things that affect Western Massachusetts, one of them being, uh, the east seems to be enjoying a lot of business boom and then population boom even, and a lot of work, uh, people are coming in for work. And western side of the state is continuing to lose population and people are going elsewhere for uh for their work. The big thing that Eric Lesser is promoting is that uh train um between Boston and Springfield to allow some folks either to go for work but remain in Western Mass as opposed to moving to Eastern Mass, or even create the potential by virtue of having that uh that line, create some business in Western Massachusetts so people are seeing Western Mass as a more viable and attractive uh uh option, but it, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna take a while.
Didn't that hit a wall recently? Wasn't there something that uh?
Yeah, so uh, it, the feasibility study, which was, I think it said three hundred thousand dollars or something like three, four hundred thousand dollars, was in the budget. An overnight maneuver, they removed it without even telling people. They said, no, we're not gonna do the feasibility study. And uh, he, you know, uh, I guess some folks are not really thinking that it's a good move to uh have that line and a good chunk of that consideration is probably based on uh personal, economic, uh, business considerations, so it has to be discussed. Uh, but he was adamant that he was gonna push this every budget and see if he can get it back in, at least to understand the the pros and cons of it. Uh, but transportation of that sort, there there is a lot of research that shows that it actually would benefit uh less developed areas business-wise like Western Massachusetts. So so I I think he's looking for some uh support from from other legislators and his constituents and hopefully he gets it sometime soon.
It'd definitely be easier than three and a half hours stuck in a car.
Oh, yeah, it's on the front end.
But my my challenge, you know, having spent some time on transportation engineering, we are, we coined that line as fast rail and that's not fast rail. It it takes two hours to get to Boston and that's after you get to Springfield. So that's already, you know, almost the same time I would spend in car. If I'm lucky someday, I may make it in hour and a half, some days I may make it in three hours. On balance, it's about the same thing. We have to change the the narrative, the conversation around it, but I I still think as a transportation uh investment, it is, it is an important investment and we should find a way to at least get the study done. And I'm sure people will realize that it's gonna be beneficial for Western Mass.
And even if it's not faster, there's plenty of people, I mean, I I don't like driving to Boston, so-
And it's productive, right?
I'm more likely, I'm more likely to be on a train and starting work early-
Yeah.
Yeah.
While I'm on the train and get a job there that pays much more than they pay here, so.
Absolutely.
And bringing it back to our, our focus and our uh concern, I know people who tried to commute to the eastern part of the state for work and eventually they got burned out, so they said, I'm moving. Uh, just, I have to move close to Boston. Yeah, we want people to keep their kids here. Okay, with that, we will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Part A three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we have a roll call, please?
Jen Curran, aye.
Diane Payne Rukowski, aye.
Maureen McCourt, aye.
And Maria Ran, aye.
And Mike Simpson, aye.
Thank you all, have a good evening.